Good evening. I'd like to open the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is October 24th. It is at 6:30 PM. And I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiation with non-union personnel, interim town manager Peter Johnson Staub. And to not go into executive session could put the deliberations in jeopardy as I do so declare.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, by roll call?
Patterson, aye.
Scott Price, aye.
Zalinski, aye.
Taylor, aye. And we will return to open session at approximately 7 o'clock. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is October 24th, 2022. It is 7 o'clock PM, and the board is returning from executive session. And I am happy to announce that we have come to an agreement with Peter Johnson Staub. We've come to a contractual agreement with Peter Johnson Staub to be our interim town manager. And at a later date, that contract will be on the agenda to execute. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to remind you of a couple of things. Please silence your cell phones. Notify me as the chair if you're making a video or audio recording of this open meeting session. And I will ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't believe we have a proclamation tonight, so we will move over to recognitions.
Madam Chair, I have a list of recognitions for tonight. I had the pleasure of spending the day with the Falmouth Police Department last week, and I'll go into more detail about that in my select board report. But I would like to thank all of the officers and the people in the department who welcomed me into the department for the day. A few people took me on tours. I also went out on a couple ride-alongs. So, I would like to acknowledge also the dispatchers, Mary Blynn, Stephanie Berry, for the amazing work that they do. Captain Brian Reed, Lieutenant Douglas DeCosta, Lieutenant Brian Kinsella, Lieutenant Michael Semenow, Sergeant Ben Guthrie, Detective Ronald Carpenter, Officer Eddie Moore, Officer Newton Cardoza, Officer Sean Lowe, Officer Julia Massey, Officer John DePont, Kyle Moye, James Porter, Thomas McGuire, Sean Silva, and Alex Franklin, and of course, Chief of Police Ed Dunn. Again, thank you for welcoming me and for letting me spend the day with the department. And it was really great. I look forward to telling you guys about it in my select board member report.
Thank you. Other recognitions?
Today's a Hindu holiday, Diwali.
Diwali, yeah.
Yes. Okay, announcements? Any announcements?
Madam Chair, I have a few announcements.
Please.
In our packet is the Cape Cod Climate Change Collaborative Program speakers for the annual Net Zero 2020 conference. That is going to be online Friday, February 28th, from 8:30 AM to 1:30 PM. There's a lot of information about that in our packet if anyone is interested. I'd also like to announce that Halloween in the whole will be happening in Woods Hole Saturday, this Saturday, October 29th, from 3 to 5 PM. There'll be jack-o'-lanterns, costumes, candy. For more information, visit woods hole dot com. And on Thursday, November 3rd, from 8 to 11 AM in Hyannis at the Cape Codder Hotel is the Housing to Protect Cape Cod Summit. And that is hosted by Housing Assistance Corporation. For more information, visit the hack website.
I think that one actually is, you can attend by Zoom.
As well, okay.
There's a Zoom link for that conference.
Any other announcements from the board?
Madam Chair, I do have an announcement as well.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So, the town is updating its open space and recreation plan. This is being led by the planning department. They are holding a virtual public workshop on Thursday, November 3rd, from 6 to 7:30 PM. There are flyers circulated in various places. It's also advertised right on the homepage of the town website.
Thank you. And one last announcement. The International Persons with Disabilities Day is December 3rd at our rec center from 10:30 AM until 12:30 PM. Public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. And since the matter has not been included on this agenda, the select board will not participate in discussion of your topic. It is not appropriate to use public comment period to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are permissible. Anyone here for public comment? Okay. We will move on. A firm appointment of our Human Resources Director. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to introduce Susan Lumping as my appointment for Human Resources Director. And I am seeking the board's affirmation of my appointment tonight. Susan is very well qualified. She presently works for the Human Resources Department of the Town of Mashpee. And all of us on the interview panels who interviewed Susan were really impressed with her knowledge, her aptitude, and her passion for the field, as demonstrated by her professional development. Her references were outstanding, and we're excited to welcome her aboard. And she is here with us tonight.
Great. Susan, would you like to come up to the podium, please? Just say hello.
Good evening, everyone. I'm honored to be here, and I'd like to thank Peter for his appointment. And I'd like to thank Kathy from the department for coming to support me. That was a wonderful surprise this evening. And I'd like to thank all of you for consideration of my appointment.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, I should note that I will not be requesting an exemption from the residency requirement because Susan is a Falmouth resident.
And thanks for your support of the school system. I understand you're active on the North Falmouth Elementary PTO.
Yes.
It's nice to know you're already invested. That's really a great sign.
I saw that in your resume. Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, you have a motion, a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Welcome aboard.
I think it's an endorsement, right? It's not approval per se. That's really...
It's an affirm, affirmation.
Yes.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Mashpee.
Okay, we'll move on to the town manager's preliminary report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On your agenda tonight, you have interviews for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. There is one candidate for two vacant seats. There is also an interview for the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have one candidate for one full member vacancy. I would also note that there is an associate member vacancy for the Zoning Board of Appeals as well. You then have three hearings on your agenda. The first is a continuation of a Flow Neutral Variants hearing for 13 Davis Straits, the Falmouth Plaza. That we will be seeking to continue again. The parties have not reached agreement on that item. Your next hearing is an alteration of premise for 7 Nathan Ellis Highway, Buca Tino's Restaurant. The applicant seeks approval for outdoor seating. And when the outdoor seating is in use, the indoor seating will be reduced such that the total number of seats remains unchanged at 256. The total number of seats is consistent with the special permit received from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The departments have not raised any concerns with this application, and I recommend approval. The next and last hearing you have is a wetlands hearing for 278 Scranton Avenue, Falmouth Holding Corp. The applicant seeks to replace failing piers and bulkhead. The Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions for this request, and there are no shellfish or navigation concerns. I recommend approval of that as well. On your business agenda, we have a change of manager for an all alcohol club license for 336 Palmer Ave, Falmouth Post 70, Inc., Amvets. And this is just an opportunity for the board to meet the manager and reiterate the responsibilities of the manager for this existing license. We have on the agenda a report from the Veterans Council Committee. However, the chair has asked that we reschedule that due to some personal issues that arose in the last couple of weeks. So, that will be rescheduled. The next item on the business agenda is a report from the Falmouth Road Race. The chair has asked the Road Race to come in and talk about how the Road Race went this past September. It was, as the board is well aware, there was a lot of dialogue about the appropriate number of runners, and the board wanted to have a little post-event conversation to talk about how it went. Next on your business agenda is an item. The Falmouth Housing Authority is seeking a $100,000 subsidy from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, with the select board as the trustees of that fund. This request is to conduct an assessment of the condition of 303 existing affordable housing units. The report will allow for planning and also enable the Falmouth Housing Authority to apply for funding from various federal and state agencies. Included in your packet is a memo from me with some more background. Finally, on your business agenda, you have adopted the strategic plan. And I just want to take a moment to commend the board for the time that you put into the strategic plan. It is a significantly different and, I would argue, improved document from what was adopted last year. The board dedicated three workshop meetings to really have an opportunity to discuss the issues and set more actionable goals. And I think your efforts are reflected in a document that will be a more effective guide for us as we move ahead through the next year and we work on the board's goals. On the consent agenda tonight, I am recommending that the board hold Item B under licenses, which is an application for a new entertainment license requested for 285 Main Street, which is operating as Chivrix Cafe and Bar. The applicant is seeking approval to have amplified music during its hours of operation, which run from 8 AM to 1 AM. There are some residential apartments that are abutting the property. And I just wanted the board to have an opportunity to consider that. And the applicant has been invited, and I believe may be able to join us tonight so that you can have a dialogue with the applicant about those issues. The remainder of the items on the consent agenda have been reviewed by staff and raised no concerns, and I recommend approval. And lastly, you have several sets of minutes, executive session and regular session minutes. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We will move into committee interviews. Interview, vote, and appoint committee member Solid Waste Advisory Committee Christine Copely. Is Christine here? Come on up.
Hello.
Good evening. Tell us a little bit about yourself and your desire to be on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
I have been a Falmouth homeowner for 26 years on a seasonal basis. I moved here three years ago, full-time. Due to the pandemic, I haven't really had an opportunity to enmesh myself in this community. And as things have eased up a bit, I've been looking around, figuring out where I can put my talents and my energies. Alan, read trash talk in the paper that last spring. Came to several monthly meetings of the advisory committee, and I would love to participate in that. I care about trash. I care about reducing trash. I care about improving our recycling. I want to exploit the new bins that we have. And I've kind of thought that my neighborhood is Seaco Shores, and I'd love to see Seaco's be the powerhouse recycling neighborhood and then expand from there.
Great. Questions from the board?
I have a comment. That's actually my committee assignment. I met you at one of the meetings, and you really do know Seaco Shores, don't you?
Thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, I move we appoint for term at the 30th, 2025.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, zoning board of appeals. I'm not sure you need much introduction.
Who's this guy?
Frank Duffy. Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here tonight. And I submit my application for appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Just briefly, for the last few decades anyways, I have been working with the board on a regular basis, doing zoning opinions, helping them with interpretation of the zoning enabling act, the zoning bylaw, procedural matters, and I've also represented them in court, all the way up to the appeals court, about 40 times. So, I feel I have some experience that might be of benefit to the board. I think the Board of Appeals is, in my opinion, it's always been one of the most important regulatory boards in Falmouth. It does special permits, where you have situations where a use is allowed in a particular district by special permit, which means that the board must exercise its discretion to put conditions on the permit that will allow the project to go forward without negative impacts on the neighborhood. Another very important permit that they issue is a variance, where again, the zoning bylaw permits something, but there's something unique about the land. It's soil conditions, it's topography, it's shape, that would impose a financial hardship on the owner if the project were to go forward with literal compliance with the zoning bylaw. So, again, the board has discretion to vary the bylaw, to avoid its literal interpretation, and allow the project to go forward, again, keeping in mind that the purpose of the bylaw is to protect the neighborhood so you don't want to have a negative impact. And finally, perhaps the most controversial one is the comprehensive permit under Chapter 40B of the general laws, where you are asking the Board of Appeals to basically waive provisions of the zoning bylaw to permit the construction of affordable housing. And this, I think, is something that's, I know it's very high on your agenda to promote affordable housing, but at the same time, the Board of Appeals recognizes that, but it has to also take into effect what conditions must be applied so that, again, the project will benefit the town and not be a detriment. So, there's a lot of discretion that goes on, and I've been through it with them, and I think I can help them as a member of the board. I would very much like to serve. Now, I have served, as you know, for the last, I guess, 39 years as town council. I'm now retired, but there have been some questions about whether or not there's a conflict of interest. I did call the State Ethics Commission. I revealed to them all of the relevant facts, and I was told that, no, there is no conflict of interest to be a member of the board. I can be a member. However, I will reveal to you, and you may already know, that I am a member of the Falmouth Housing Corporation's Board of Directors. And I've been on the Housing Corporation's Board of Directors since 1996. And in that time, we built 240 units of affordable housing. All of them built with a special permit from the Board of Appeals. So, if the housing corporation comes before the board for a special permit, I will recuse myself. But based upon my own knowledge, I can tell you that everything that they have in the pipeline now already is permitted. So, it's probably not going to come up for another couple of years. So, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Any questions? Actually answered my questions.
I don't have any questions. Just comment. Thanks for being willing to serve on the zoning board. I appreciate it.
I'd like to move to appoint Frank Duffy to a full member position, unexpired term ending 6/30/23.
I'd happily second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Frank. Such an important part of this town.
Okay, we are early for our hearings. So, what I'd like to do...
No, you're okay.
Am I? Is it 7:15? Oh, I thought it was 7:30. Thank you. Okay, so we have our public hearing number one, Flow Neutral Bylaw. And I understand that I need to entertain a motion to continue this hearing.
Real quick, Madam Chair, if I may, the notice of public hearing does say 7:30, though. So, if it was printed as 7:30, do we need to stick on?
I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, I thought we were doing those at 7:15.
I think the 7:15 on the agenda might be a mistake. We usually do 7:30. Okay, so...
Now, the wetlands one does say 7:15 on the public hearing notice.
We could do the...
Take them out of order?
Do we? Certainly. Do we have the Wetlands Dock Hearing, Falmouth Holdings Corp? Do we have someone here to represent that? Okay. Could we read the public notice?
Absolutely. The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-14.8 Wetlands Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 7:15 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Falmouth Holdings Corp. for permission to reconstruct the existing bulkhead, seawall, commercial piers, and ticket office building, remove the reset utilities, construct boat wash pad with subsurface holding tank, and construct stormwater management leaching trenches, all within previously legal altered area at 278 Scranton Ave, Falmouth Marine Yachting, Falmouth MA. Area affected is Falmouth Inner Harbor. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Office of the Select Board, per order of the Select Board. Publication dates Friday, October 7th, 2022, and Friday, October 14th, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you. Welcome, and we have slated you for 15 minutes.
Thank you. For the record, Raul Lizardi from Cape Island Engineering, representing the applicant. With us in the audience is also Bob Ammon, representing the applicant, the attorney, and Brian with the applicant, who is the manager at the site. So, this project before you is for a special permit for reconstruction of the bulkhead on Inner Harbor and reconstruction and replacement of the existing piers. The site has been a commercial marina since about the 1940s. And he has had licenses for the bulkheads and the boat ramps, sorry, not boat ramps, the bulkhead and the piers since the 1940s, 50s, 60s, 80s, 90s, and the 2000s. The last special permit issued by this board was issued in 2008 for some modifications to the marina. What we're proposing to do here is reconstruct the bulkhead. The existing bulkhead is a timber construction, and it's lasted over the lifespan of about 30 years. And now it's showing a lot of deterioration. So, we're proposing to remove the timber bulkhead and replace it with vinyl or composite sheet piles. The existing piers is a combination of floating piers and fixed piers. And what we're proposing to do is remove all of the existing piers and replace them with the majority of being floating piers, except for one pier that's going to be a fixed pier. And that's the one that's going to be located at the northern side of the property. The majority of the work is happening within an area that we're going to call a reconfiguration zone. After all the local permit is, this project has to go through the state level for a Chapter 91. And what the state is allowing us to do is to set aside an area where these floating piers can be repositioned as long as the square footage remains the same. So, we call out a reconfiguration zone where the proposed piers, once approved, they can be shifted around as needed for the facility. The uses on the site are not going to change. We're still going to be a commercial facility. One of the fixed pier that's being proposed is going to service the ferry that is currently serviced at the site. Something else that is changing in this location is, on the existing wharf, there is an existing ticket booth. And that ticket booth is built on top of the wharf. This ticket booth is being relocated on shore instead of being on the wharf. And it's proposed along the northern side, which is closest to where the pier for the ferry is going to be repositioned. So, all of this work is happening within the western shores of Inner Harbor, and it requires a special permit like is done in the past, a few changes to the site. The entire bulkhead and the entire pier system is going to have a new license as we're reconstructing the entire project. The property was, the project was presented to the Conservation Commission. It received an order of condition. There were comments from the harbor master, positive comments for the project, as well as from the shellfish constable, and there was a letter from Marine and Fisheries. Because the project is taking place in the water, there is a time of year restriction. And the order of condition from Conservation acknowledges that time of year restriction, and the applicant will have to abide by it. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Questions from the board?
How is the floating pier assembly secured? I'm concerned in storm events, what would be the method of attachment, and how secure is it?
So, we have piles. The top of the piles are typically cut at higher than the flood elevation. So, now granted, this is based on a 100-year flood event. There could be a 200-year flood event, which is higher than normal. But that's the intent, is that the piles are cut at a height that will protect the floating piers. The fixed pier is fixed, so that will not float away. The entire site is in the flood plain. So, should the flood, the 100-year flood event happen, the entire site and most of the Inner Harbor surrounding properties will be underwater.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, the new sheet piles, are they going in? How does that work? Do they go in in front of the old structure, and then you extract the old structure, or vice versa? Do they go in behind, and then how does that work?
So, there is a combination. The majority of the proposed sheet pile is going to be installed behind the existing. In some section, it's going as far back as 10 feet behind the existing one. But there's other sections that is going at the same location, same alignment as the existing one. So, the ones that are going behind the existing, the contractor can keep the existing one as a buffer to the Inner Harbor, install the sheet pile on the dry land. The ones that are on the same location as the existing timber, the existing timber has to be demolished, removed, to use the same area for driving the new sheet piles.
What is that? That creates a corral so you can de-water and get all your debris out?
There is a steel fence, a steel boom in the harbor that's going to be positioned. There may be a secondary steel boom that will be installed if needed, and that could be moved as the project moves along.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, just to mention that our Marine Environmental Sciences Services Director, Greg Fraser, has mentioned that there is an Army Corps of Engineering requirement for a 30-foot buffer. And he's basically saying no setback from southern butter. All activity falls outside the 30-foot Army Corps of Engineers. And so, he just wanted to make sure that was included as part of the conditions of this permit. It's in kind of small print, but we have it documented in his letter.
Yep. Yeah, the plan... So, the plan shows the Army Corps Channel and the 30-foot setback. So, the proposed reconfiguration zone meets that 30-foot setback from the Army Corps Channel. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I don't know. I guess I'm still a little concerned about the, being at the entrance to the harbor and the fact that they're all floating piers. The fact that they could be dislodged in a storm is concerning. The answer that the height of the pile is the limitation of the securement of those piers. I mean, if those floats are concerning, is there any other attachment?
I'd be happy to make a comment. My name is Brian Davenport. I'm the general manager at Falmouth Marine. And we've got two different contractors right now that are putting together proposals for the floating piers. And each of them require that not only are the piers attached to the pilings, there'll be a float that goes along the bulkhead, and then attached to that will be the finger piers going out. So, there's a double structure that is occurring. Each of those fingers that go out will have a V connection with significant galvanized steel pipe connections that secure those. So, there'll be, not only, to Raul's point, there'll be the piling structures that secure it, but also connected to each of those base floating docks along the bulkhead. Each of those will have steel structures, and the fingers themselves have a steel inner core that will add rigidity and strength to those. that will add rigidity and strength to those fingers so that there's limited, no chance of them breaking in half or anything of that sort.
So even if they rise above the piling height, they're still going to remain attached to the property?
Correct, to the pilings that are against the bulkhead.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on this project?
Nope, that's it.
Your public comment?
I will ask for public comment. And then I'll ask to close the hearing.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion among the board?
I move that we approve this application as conditioned.
Second. Ah, sorry, quick today.
No, you're good.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will now go back to number one, the Flow Neutral Bylaw Public Hearing. And I will entertain a motion to continue this hearing until November 7th.
I do think you need to open the hearing and then-
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Open the hearing.
I can read that. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board of the Town of Falmouth will hold a public hearing on Monday, August 22nd, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, Falmouth MA, on the application of New Creek LLC for wastewater flow variance under Chapter 180, Section 56 of the Code of Falmouth, the so-called Flow Neutral Bylaw, for mixed residential-commercial overlay district development with affordable rental housing at 13 Davis rates in said Falmouth, parcel 3915049D004. Per order of the Select Board, publication date Friday, August 5th, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Okay, now I will entertain a motion to continue.
Madam Chair, at the request of the applicant, I move that we continue this hearing.
And we're going to continue it until November 7th?
Thank you.
Okay.
November 7th.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have another hearing. Application for an alteration of premises of all alcoholic common victoria license. Buca Corp., DBA Buca Tina Restaurant and Wine Bar, 7 Nathan Ellis Highway. And would you read the public notice?
I am looking for it. If anyone gets it quicker than I.
Here it is.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the general laws as amended that Buca Corp., doing business as Buca Tina Restaurant and Wine Bar, has applied for an alteration of premises to its all-alcoholic beverages common victoria license to be exercised at 7 Nathan Ellis Highway, North Falmouth, MA. A hearing will be held in the Select Board's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 7:15 PM on the above application. Per order of Select Board, Licensing Board Douglas C. Brown, Nancy R. Taylor, Samuel H. Patterson. It says Megan English Braga, but it should be Scott Zalinski, Anjulee Scott Price. Is that okay? Publication date Friday, October 14th, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a declaration that I sat on Buca's last special permit for increased parking. I'm taking the fact of my decision with this. I just want to make the board aware of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Select Board members. This is Bob Jarvis. He's the owner of Buca Tina Restaurant. Also in attendance is Jennifer Jarvis, the co-owner of Buca Tina Restaurant. I am John Aida. I am the applicant's attorney. Law firm is McDermott Kulten Miller, located at 28 State Street in Boston. This is an application for an alteration of premise. It's really born out of the pandemic as people got more and more accustomed to eating outside and with the temporary extension, a lot of the clientele had asked Mr. Jarvis and Mrs. Jarvis to expand that on a more permanent basis, and it's something that the customers have really demanded and come to expect and appreciate that. So something that we've looked into on a permanent basis to make that as an added convenience for the clientele. So we're looking to do a few things. Part of that alteration, the first part is to build a outdoor bar permanent structure. It's a roof structure. It would seat 16 patrons outside. In addition, there is a outdoor patio area which would seat 32 patrons. So it's 48 additional seats outside. And to accommodate that, we're not looking to increase the overall seating allowed on the premise. So we're taking those seats away from the inside, reconfiguring that. So the total number of seating will stay and remain as 256 seats. What it does in size actually alleviates things, makes things a little bit easier, a little better flow for the, you know, for the customers to get around. And the final thing they're doing is, and part of the alteration, is they're constructing an outdoor, sorry, not outdoor, they're constructing an extension of the kitchen. It's a prep area kitchen. It's expanding out to add an additional room in the kitchen for prep, which is going to really help out with the staff to accommodate those needs. So those are the total summary of all the changes of the premises. So the one change on the building itself is the addition of that prep area, and then the other changes are all outside, external, creation of an outdoor bar with seating for 16, and then the outdoor patio, which anyone that has gone there is going to see that it mimics the, what is there for the expanded seating during the pandemic. So it's something that the board's already accustomed to, and obviously the staff is already accustomed to. So we just like to do that on a permanent basis. If the board has any questions, we would be happy to answer those.
Questions from the board?
No questions, just a comment, and I'm glad to see that you're taking this action and getting with the times. And I'm glad, I think everyone needs to do this. So many places have had temporary seating.
Absolutely.
If you want to make it permanent, this is how you do it.
Mr. Zalinski?
I'm sure you remember me from your last one. I'm sure you made the same accommodations for the residents and the abutters that you did with your last one. I mean, they're fully aware of what you're asking for and-
Yeah, so Mr. Jarvis reached out. He actually had meetings on-site, met with all the neighbors, and did add the fencing, added-
No, he did a great job with the last special-
additional trees and everything, so I think we really didn't anticipate any issues, concerns, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So this doesn't, this does not conclude any entertainment in that area?
No entertainment, correct.
Any public comment? Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing. Some move?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Conversation?
Is that the motion to close the hearing?
No, after approved.
Only motion to close it. Okay, discussion among the board?
I would move approval.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again. I did provide Phyllis with the affidavit. I do have the original if the board needs that.
I give you my answer.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move into business. We are ahead of ourselves. But we will talk, I see that the road race is here, so I think I'm going to take you out of order and take you first, if that's okay? Okay, and I've only given you 10 minutes, but we would just like an update?
Okay, I think it's six minutes.
There you go.
Good evening, Chairman Taylor and Select Board. I'm Scott Gelfi, President of the Board of Directors for the Falmouth Road Race, and I'm here with my Vice President, Bob Antonucci. Thank you for hearing our update on the 2022 race. As you all know, we were here in the spring appealing the Special Events Committee's decision to cut our field size from the 10-year constant of 12,800 registrants to 10,000. We accepted the Select Board's vote to allow 10,000 runners with the hope that we could work more closely with the public safety team to host a safe and efficient race, and in doing so, return to our field size in 2023. We are here to report on how the race in 2022 went, the subsequent wrap-up, and our plans as we proceed. One concern that we had this past spring was because of the pandemic deferrals, that there wasn't a chance, there was going to be a chance that not available, there would not be enough available spots for Falmouth residents. Luckily enough, pandemic deferrals did not take advantage of their guaranteed entry so that all the Falmouth residents that registered were accepted. Once the numbers of Falmouth residents, charity runners and sponsors were fulfilled, we only had about 650 entries available for our random selection process for which 7,000 applied. Our traditional attrition rate of approximately 12% was seen again this year. We had 8,764 runners start the race and 8,610 finish. Doors closed on the last bus at 7:50 AM and left Catherine Lee Bates Road at 7:55 AM. It was a hot day, but our medical team of nearly 300 professionals and volunteers in place from Woods Hole to Falmouth Heights were prepared. 105 runners were seen in the medical tents, mostly ice baths due to reduce, to reduce their body temperature. Six were transported to the hospital and all were released. The last finished across the line at 11:55 AM, and the roads were reopened at 12:55 AM. In late September, we had a post-race debrief with our public safety team and went through the event in its entirety. Our medical director, Chris Tryanos, Fire Chief Smith and Police Chief Dunn were all in attendance, plus several representatives from each. They all reported on their areas of responsibility. Positives and negatives were brought forth, and solutions were discovered, discussed. The consensus from our operations team was that this was our best race ever. One challenge that we discovered this year, as both, most businesses have experienced, is that expenses have gone up by an exorbitant amount. Buses, barricades, tables, chairs, tents, tech support, trucking fees, signage, food, runner gifts, all increased by as much as 40%. The cost of our traditional runner coffee mug this year was double. We did raise our entry fee, but it does not keep pace with inflation and the general cost of doing business. In addition to registration fees, we depend on donations, sponsorships and merchandise sales to help offset expenses. And with 2,800 fewer runners allowed, our bottom line has certainly been affected. Because of this, we have postponed our fall grant program until we are able to take a full accounting of where we stand financially. Some great takeaways from the weekend. We had a Monday night VIP reception celebrating the 50th running and honoring our first winners back in 1973. Our former co-directors, John and Lucia Carroll and Rich and Kathy Sherman, and the two remaining men who have now completed every single race, Brian Salzberg and Tom Branley, all 50. Senator Susan Moran joined us to present a citation to celebrate the 50th running, and it was nice to see Select Board Member Doug Brown there representing as well. Our annual health and fitness expo at Falmouth High School, who was a three-day event opened to the public, brought in folks from all over the country to pick up their numbers and hopefully purchase some running gear. We had at least one runner from all 50 states this year, which is the first time that's ever happened. Our Saturday Falmouth Track Festival. We had the 20th SBLI Family Fun Run, which we had 900 kids running on the new track. We honored former Rec Director Helen Kennedy for her part in starting the event and her years of dedication. We had the Tommy Cockery High School Mile and the Falmouth Elite Mile races in the late afternoon, where we had one of our exceptional Falmouth High School athletes, Henry Gartner, competing. Plus, we had a three-medal moment, which was really cool. The only American women to have ever medaled in the Olympic Marathon. Joni Benoit, Deana Castor and Molly Seidel were brought in for a conversation to kick off the track events. It's the first time these three women have ever been together. That was a cool event. The Numbers for Nonprofits Charity Program, in its 22nd year, raised a record $6.4 million, all Massachusetts-based charities, bringing the 22-year total of that program to over $56 million. President of Penske Truck Leasing, Art Valley, surprised us with an announcement that Penske will be donating a truck to the Falmouth Road Race to celebrate our 50th running, and he's going to paint it with the lighthouse on it with the runners going down the side. That was a nice surprise. Reporting from Falmouth Heights, Marivista Neighborhood Association, shared with us by our liaison Debbie Scott, was nearly all positive this year as we continue our collaboration and efforts to minimize the impact we have on our neighbors in the heights. We look forward to continuing our work with the town, the businesses, the neighborhoods and other stakeholders as we plan for our future events. We plan on meeting with public safety in the coming weeks to start planning for 2023. Captain Brian Lowen has volunteered to be the liaison from the Falmouth Police Department on our organizing committee. I think this will go a long way in bridging that communication gap. We have also added to our Board of Directors Lieutenant Colonel Jason Cullenade, who has experience with the race and the town, and we look forward to his help with public safety as we move forward. In closing, we just want to reiterate that we're grateful for the ongoing support of the Select Board, the Special Events Committee, the police and fire departments, our emergency communications team, the DPW Beach Department, Chamber of Commerce, public school, public, Falmouth Public Schools, the neighborhood associations and the resident teams and organizations that volunteer and participate in the race itself. Thank you very much, unless Bob has anything to add. If there are any questions or comments, we'll try to answer.
Any questions, any comments from the board?
Well, I do have a question in that, you know, we, limiting the number of entry to 10,000, I know came up kind of late and was awkward.
Yep.
Have you started the discussion with the Chief of Police about what it could be next year?
Well, we hope to. We've reached out to him and we're, we're in the process of planning that. We want to get that done sooner than later. We just finished up, wrapped up, we had our wrap-up, I think, the last week of September, and now Brian's in place as our liaison. Brian's talked to the chief. I think the chief was away this past week. So yeah, we're going to, we want to get that done now.
Great.
I had the same question.
Just one other comment that he won't mention, the winner this year was Ben Flanagan. And is his huge-
Up to the mic.
And so, oh, he wanted the mic?
Please.
One thing that Scott would mention these two is the winner this year was Ben Flanagan for the second time. He will be son's, his son-in-law in a couple of years, engaged to his daughter. So, and he just won the half marathon in Spain, so. That's great.
Congratulations.
He makes it fun, doesn't he? The way he comes across the finish line.
Well, the race has given me a lot over the years, and now I'm getting a son-in-law out of it too.
Well done. Thank you very much. Thanks for reporting back to us.
All right, appreciate it.
Thanks for all you do for our town.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay, as we heard from Mr. Johnson Staub, the Veterans Council Committee is postponed, so we will not hear a report out from them. Application for a change of manager of all alcohol club license, Falmouth Post 70, Inc., Amvets 336 Palm Rav, Falmouth. Is there anyone here?
We're still on the running, right?
For that?
7:55.
We can, we can wait. We can move on. Acting as trustees of Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, act on application from Falmouth Housing Authority for $100,000 to obtain a comprehensive assessment of building conditions for 303 existing affordable units.
Madam Chair, Bobby Richards, the Executive Director of the Falmouth Housing Authority, is here with us tonight.
Okay, would you like to come up, Ms. Richards?
Hi. May I come by additional information?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Richards. I'm the Executive Director of the Falmouth Housing Authority, and it's an honor to be before you. I'd also like to thank two of our commissioners, Mr. Stephen Patton and Mr. Michael Galasso, for coming out in support of today's application as well. So before you, we have an application to the Affordable Housing Fund with a request for $100,000, which we are so thankful that was recommended from the committee. The Housing Authority, as you know, is challenged with the age of its portfolio. I don't know if many people know, but the Housing Authority was actually established in 1948. Our oldest building is off of Lakeview, 238 Lakeview Ave. That property was actually built in 1957. In our portfolio, we have three buildings, or three properties, that were built before 1978, so we certainly want to look at, looking at those buildings in terms of needs assessments for some of the aging, some of the aging systems. We discovered that we had a boiler at one of our buildings from 1960, which really doesn't make very much sense. So we are looking to do a very thorough, comprehensive needs assessment, not just of an overall building, but actually going into every unit, looking at every knick and cranny to determine, how can we modernize, first of all? How can we better use green efficiencies and reduce some of our redundancies in those buildings? We're also looking to, to address tenant concerns regarding the age of their units. We are blessed in Falmouth to have tenants that some of them have very long tenancies. We have original tenants to some of our buildings. Our Taticat and Harborview Buildings were built in the 80s, I want to say 84 and 81, and we still have some of those original tenants. And they come to us and they say, you know, I haven't had- And they come to us and they say, you know, I haven't had very much done in my apartment since I first moved in, which is unbelievable. So we're working to find exactly what's going on in every single unit and really create a reconditioning plan based on an outside, an outside opinion. We learned that our state funding would not actually cover any type of needs assessment, which is why we turned to the committee, and we're grateful for their recommendation.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I think it's an excellent idea.
I do.
Go ahead.
Will this money also encompass any kind of abatement assessments as well for these older buildings?
No. No, this money is really strictly for needs assessments, but we are trying to look at all the systems. So we're looking at septics, we're looking at roofing, and anything internal to the units themselves, as well as the overall systems that run the buildings.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Brown?
That was my question sort of as well. I want to make sure that this is really about the assessment of the condition of the buildings. When I was reading it, it said about the sustainability. I hope it's really just about the material repairs that are needed for the buildings themselves. Is that?
It is. And let me clarify. So I've been very successful, and I'm grateful for the support I get, but I've been very successful in grant writing since I've been at the Housing Authority. I've been there about five years. And most of you know that the Housing Authority was awarded nearly $3 million to repair the piping at the Harborview Building, where that piping was a type of lead that failed over for many housing authorities in Massachusetts. And so what we're looking for is a needs assessment that can assist us in going out and finding more money to fix our buildings. So that's the purpose of the grant.
Any other questions?
I think it's a great idea.
Just a technical question. Is this under the, eligible under the Community Preservation Act itself, or are we going to use this to pay for it? Are we going to use non-CPA money to pay for this?
I can take that question. Yeah, this would, I do not believe this would qualify for community preservation money, so we will be using the free cash allocation.
Yeah, there's plenty of it, I know that, figure on that committee, so I just.
That's what we've heard.
Any other questions?
I'd move approval.
I have one that may be beyond the scope.
Sure.
I would envision that there's going to be a lot of major repairs based on some of the units that I've seen personally. What would be the plan for relocation of the tenants? Do you have enough excess capacities for this?
Well, this is for the needs assessment, so.
Won't be part of this.
It won't be part of this particular project.
Okay, I thought that's, very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd move approval.
Okay, I have a, oh, is there a specific language I need to say?
There is, actually, yeah. Yes, there it is.
Thank you. I move that the board, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, grant $100,000 to the Falmouth Housing Authority to retain the services of a consultant to perform a needs assessment on current affordable housing units and authorize the acting town manager to execute a commitment letter and grant agreement setting forth the terms of the financial award to the Falmouth Housing Authority.
Okay, I have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Might I also add that a few years ago, we were invited to give an update on the Housing Authority. It might have been three or four years ago, and I just wanted to extend out to all of you that we're very pleased to come over and give an update at the end of each fiscal year, and just let you know what the challenges and successes have been for that year for the Housing Authority.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so we still have a few minutes, so I think what I would like to do is I'm going to run through the consent agenda and going, and going back, I just want to remind the board that on the consent agenda, under licenses, we're going to, we're going to hold B so that we can have a conversation. So I will read the consent agenda. If anyone would like to hold any other piece of the agenda, please notify me. Approve application for an amendment to a package store license, change of LLC manager, OSJL Spirits LLC, doing business as Ocean State Job Lot, 50 T-Ticket Highway, East Falmouth. Approve application for an additional day to special one-day wine and malt liquor license, WM Cycling Events, Inc., Pan-American Cyclo Cross Championship, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, Friday, November 4, 2022. Okay, administrative orders, approve ever-source petition to install one new handhold labeled 318 at the base of existing pole 318, and to install approximately 24 feet of conduit and cable under the town road easterly, starting at the handhold 318. This work is necessary to provide new electric service to 13 Abbey's Lane. Vote to approve warrant for the 2022 state election on November 8, 2022. Vote to reappoint Peter Johnson Staub as the Falmouth representative to the Cape and the Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board. Initiate renaming process to add a plaque to the bandshell on Falmouth Music and Arts Pavilion, naming the bandshell the Linda, I think it's going to be the Lynn Whitehead Bandshell. I just wanted to change the name based on the last email. Vote to confirm the charter review committee work is concluded and the committee is disbanded. Authorize expenditure from the DARE donations account in the amount of $1,438.35 for the purpose of Halloween bags for the elementary students at the Falmouth Public Schools. Authorize expenditure from the DARE donations account in the amount of $127.09 for the purpose of supplies for the Rad Kids class. Committee appointments, Golf Advisory Committee, Richard Bowles, Recreation Committee representative, and the Community Preservation Committee, Robert Brown, Recreation Committee representative. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda while holding 1B?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to licenses, application for.
Madam Chair, we have a question.
Yes.
Sorry, it appears we're ahead of schedule at 7:55. I was supposed to be here for the events manager license change. I was here a week prior to that, but it looks like we were ahead of that based on the gentleman.
Yeah, so that's 1A under business.
Yes. And we, I just skipped ahead because you weren't here, so we just went through the consent agenda, but we are right back to business. Application for change of manager of all alcohol club license, Falmouth Post 70, Inc. Ambets, 336 Palmer Ave, Falmouth. Please, and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Guy Paterno, Falmouth resident for 20-plus years. I am now the commander at Ambets, local. I am a veteran, U.S. Navy, served in the Gulf War, and as of May, I took over commander.
I recognize you from all of this.
Yes, I recognize you, too. I knew your presence.
I'm just kidding.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you for your service.
Indeed, thank you.
Do I?
You are tips certified?
Yes, yes, it's all in the allocate.
Okay, and you understand that you're responsible for all that service activity at this location?
Yes. I have a team of qualified people that.
Okay, great.
Madam Chair, I'd move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second of approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, we will move on to, under business, number five, adopt the strategic plan. You all have a copy of the updated strategic plan in your, in your packets. Do we have any questions or comments on the strategic plan?
Madam Chair, are we going to just hold the B from the consent agenda to another meeting?
No, we're going to talk about it when we're done with this. I'll go back.
Okay.
I just want to finish up number five.
Okay.
To adopt the strategic plan.
Madam Chair, I know Acting Town Manager Peter Donson Staub had a recommended edit.
Yes, on page five, I wonder if the board might consider changing the title. So this is under Energy and Water Conservation and Sustainability. As the board is aware, you have identified hiring a sustainability position as one of your priorities for FY '25. The title is listed as Sustainability Director, and I wonder if you might consider changing that title to Sustainability Coordinator? And I would suggest or ask that the board also consider the next item, which is consider hiring a Coastal Resiliency Director for FY '25. Again, if the board might consider a change in the title there to Coordinator or Officer. And we can certainly, this, whatever you decide on for the plan, we can certainly talk about it and finalize it later. The point I'm, the reason I'm raising it is just because Director implies that there is oversight of additional staff, which at this point is not contemplated for either of those positions.
Comments from the board?
I was going to comment that I would think that the Coastal Resiliency Coordinator position be included in the coastal section rather than in the sustainability section as well.
Yes, good idea.
That makes sense. So move to section five.
I'd just like to make the comment that I thought this was a superior improvement to the strategic plans that we've had before. Much, you know, much more directly stated, expresses a certain amount of confidence that we really are going to take this all seriously. Less bureaucratic, you know, kind of policy language so that it's readable by, you know, any of our citizens. I just think it's a superior product in comparison to those that I've seen over the last eight years. So I commend you for all your work.
I think Gonsalves did a great job, too, putting this together.
Excellent work.
I got another comment, too. I think that we had mentioned the clinicians being implemented right away for the police department. We're going to fold that into the 2023 budget, right? Because we have the staff positions already available to shift.
Wasn't their money already available to put them in right now?
We were going to take two of the current.
Right.
Yes, officer positions and make them clinician positions.
So that actually is 2023. Right.
Yeah.
That's when they were identified under their own titles. They're switching it up right now. As soon as we can hire them, they're going to take two of the existing patrol positions.
But I think we said 2024 in the book.
2023.
I see what you're saying. That makes sense.
Right.
I would just, I would just add that in order for, you're absolutely correct, that we are seeking to move forward on this, this fiscal year. We just need to make sure that the, that the job description falls within the same pay grade as our existing social worker job descriptions. Otherwise, town meeting approval might be required, in which case we could pursue that in April. But, you know, absolutely, we are seeking to move this forward and implement this fiscal year. Right.
Thank you. Other edits?
The other one I had was, I think we, I'd like to see us keep the language in our strategic plan, that we need to identify wastewater discharge locations, because even though the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Committee is working on that, I think it's still something that should be important in front of us, that we need to know that that's a big decision that we're going to have to make, whether or not we consider an outfall or land-based discharge under wastewater.
You mean the discharge issue specifically?
The discharge issue is for us. I think it's strategic planning concern that should be identified here.
I thought I actually had seen it in here. It certainly needs to be resolved, I agree with you.
So we have language that says, plan and implement stormwater management plan and comply with DPA regulations. Prior, oh, that's stormwater management.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with Doug. I think it's such an important issue, and it's not going to be done in one year.
So we put that under the ongoing goals?
Yes. So we need to resolve the treated, what's it, treated wastewater discharge.
Yeah, we need to identify discharge sites, discharge capacity site, whether it's.
That's still kind of an ongoing thing with a solution to that, to that.
I think we have to resolve it.
It is, but it's going to be a big.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying, but I mean, she's, they're working towards options for us, correct?
That's true.
All right, so, I mean, that's, it culminates at, you know, a desire of ours as a strategic plan, and that culmination of what they brought to us to make that decision, correct?
Well, it's true, but I feel like it's such an important issue, that it's something that politically that Select Board should identify in our strategic planning, that wastewater discharge is an important strategic element.
It truly is. I mean, there's more than one way to handle discharge, but I think focusing on resolving just how it's going to get done should be part of this. I agree with Doug.
It doesn't have to be in detail, but.
Yeah.
At least a line item somewhere.
They're doing a good job of it. I commend them.
Just ongoing goals within the strategic priority.
CWA.
Identify wastewater discharge.
I think we need to figure out how we're going to do it. I don't think identifying, that's, they're already identifying ways.
Yeah.
But it's really resolving methods for discharging the treated ethyl. So that's a permitting issue, it's political issue, it's state level as well as local level. It's pretty complicated, so I think it's not, I think it's a good idea to pull it out and make it separate.
So under ongoing goals within the strategic planning area, determine discharge sites to implement the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan.
That would be adequate.
But it may not be sites, it could be methods.
Sites or methods.
Yep.
Sites or methods, identify options, just so it's called out.
So, do I have a motion to move approval of the strategic plan with the edits that I mentioned?
So moved.
Double approval.
Okay, so I have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
I think the board did a really good job. I liked breaking it down into different sections on Saturdays and really plowing through it. I think we had some spirited discussions, which I think is always a good thing. And I think we came up with a document that we can work with and that won't sit on a shelf.
I also had a lot of fun. I really enjoyed doing it.
I'm glad.
I'm glad you liked putting it together. Okay, so we will go back to our consent agenda, and we held B. And B is approve application for an entertainment license, Olive Restaurant, Inc., doing business as Chivriks Cafe and Bar 285 Main Street.
Right, thank you, Madam Chair. As I, as I mentioned, I held this, and in retrospect, perhaps it should have been on the business agenda to begin with, because it is a new entertainment license. There are some residential apartments abutting the property, so I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, and perhaps if the applicant is here, to be able to have a dialogue about the potential impact that noise from the entertainment license might have. And I'll just briefly mention, we have information about specifically units that are permitted for residential apartments. We don't have rental permits, so I don't know which of these units are at the moment occupied or not, but at 273 Main Street, there are two apartments between two upper floors. Our understanding is they're currently unoccupied. At 279, there is a restaurant and real estate office on the first floor, and we believe there are two residential units on the upper floor. And behind the applicant's property at 285 Main Street is 11 Cahoon Court, and that's actually only about 35 feet from between the two buildings, and there is a single-family single-family residence at 11 Cahoon Court. So just wanted to raise a concern that, you know, there could be, if in fact there's entertainment and amplified music that goes to 1:00 AM, that could raise some concerns for that.
Were there, were there a lot of notices sent out to those?
No, that's not part of the entertainment license process.
You've been given the...
I feel like it should be.
You think it will, huh?
I'm sorry, I said, I feel like it should be.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We've been getting a lot of correspondence with other businesses that are with the exact same component. And I don't know that why, why we wouldn't adjust our policy to that, at least to give the public some kind of opportunity to speak until after it was done. I mean, it would be, it would certainly be important to me to hear what the people that live there at least have to say.
Right.
It's a way for us to give them the opportunity to do so.
So I, not, I don't want to necessarily defend the past practice, but I, just by way of explanation, unlike liquor licenses, which require, under the general, the state general law, require a hearing, entertainment licenses do not require a formal hearing process. So it's just historically been an agenda item before the select board. So we have not ever, to my knowledge, done...
So what if there was a request by the select board, or members of the select board, to make them part of the application process?
Yes, the board can certainly make a policy decision and change the process. Yep.
Mr. Patterson?
I can tell you, over my tenure on the select board, this has always been a really difficult area. We've had an awful lot of complaints from those restaurants and taverns, whatever, that do play outdoor entertainment and use amplified music, and it has really been a source of irritation to the properties in that area. Plus, it's our Main Street, so I really question whether we want to change the whole ambiance of our Main Street by opening up this level of entertainment, both in terms of how late it goes, but also in the use of amplified music, which has come up just as a problem. Some restaurateurs and, you know, and property owners are very considerate and keep it under cloak. I know musicians like to have the ability to maybe crank up their amplification a little bit to go over a large crowd that might be in one of those buildings, but others abuse it, and we've seen that over and over again. And I, I'm very uncomfortable with opening up an 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM kind of window. So I think, and we have had to condition the properties on a number of occasions. So we've kind of focused in and tried to tailor it to the particular location and the concerns of the neighboring community. So I think it's no, I don't think there's anything wrong with us actually changing this if necessary, but I would like to hear from the applicant.
Are you here?
Yes, please, and introduce yourself. Yes, Maria Nis. Questions?
Well, the concern is that you've identified that there's an apartment building that's on, apartment unit that's only 33 feet from the back of the building.
There is a cottage, I believe.
Maybe that's what it is.
Single-family residence. Single-family residence, yes.
So we've been having issues with approving entertainment licenses and then having neighbors that were unaware that that's what's happening, and then we're getting a lot of complaints. So we're realizing that maybe our policy might need to be adjusted to notify the neighbors and get some input as to...
I have no problem notifying them.
So we might, maybe we can come back on another agenda to, we really should have a more public policy for something this important.
Agreed.
Sorry to waste your time tonight, but...
No.
It's not wasting this time.
I'm wasting my time.
I mean, it's identifying the process going forward, probably.
So the board will not take action on this tonight?
Right, I would say.
We will hold it for another agenda item. Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
And I just want to ask the applicant to think about how this changes the whole ambiance of that, of Main Street, and how it affects the neighbors. So you might want to cut back on this, but we'd like to come to a kind of a cooperative agreement with you, because we want you to succeed as an entity, a business entity on Main Street. But, so if we could come up with an amicable arrangement, you know, there's, you know, Liam McGuire's has got a band in there, and they use amplification, and they're on Main Street.
I think there's a more or less misunderstanding, probably on my part, as far as the entertainment license in general, because I don't plan to amplify beyond the small capacity of that building.
And that's the kind of reassurance, I think.
I don't want to, I'm not going to ask Aerosmith to come in. No way. This is probably a one, two-piece musical instrumental band, maybe a person, here and there.
Nice to meet you.
I'm not going to have blasting music go through the windows, no.
Okay, great.
I don't even want that.
Well, that's what we're looking for.
I want to be able to hear myself go home.
And enjoy your work.
Yeah, but...
Well...
I don't know if the board, you know...
Definitely don't want to wake the neighbors.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I was just going to say, I don't know how much the board wants to, you know, continue the conversation tonight, or have more of an in-depth conversation when it's on a future agenda after notifying Butters.
I would like to hold it. I would move to hold it, notify Butters, and have a lengthier conversation as to what this is really going to look like before we vote on it.
I think before we put it on another agenda, we need to be clear with the applicant, what we're expecting him to come back with, before coming back to us.
Yeah.
So that's a great question. So are we, does the board want to ask for changes in the application, or does the board simply want to, for the town to notify Butters and have this application come back in exactly the same form that it's in now?
I think by way of virtue, the Butters' input could help dictate what that mediation would be, don't you?
Yep, and also maybe you could give us some more ideas about, if you want to put it on paper, what you think is going to be a duet and minimal amplification, or what you have in mind so that Butters can come in and say, oh yeah, that sounds okay to us, or, you know.
Yeah, it needs to be clear to us as well.
Right.
So I would agree with that.
And I think we also need to be consistent with the other businesses in that particular area, so that we have a consistent policy, and anybody else that might be coming forward, we can cite that basically as sort of the standard that we were using. I'd like to see consistency between entities.
Maybe that makes sense. This future agenda item.
It might not be 100% consistent, though, because some have been existing and some are further from residences, but I get your point.
Well, yeah.
I think we do need to look at it through that lens.
Madam Chair, yeah, I would just add that, you know, certainly it makes sense if the board wants to try to adopt a standard to apply consistently, but as Mr. Zelensky alluded to, if there are existing license holders that already have a license, in order for the board to modify that license, you would have to go through a hearing process. That actually does require a hearing to restrict an existing license, even at a renewal stage.
Thank you.
Well, and personally, I believe that it may tie our hands, too, in terms of how we handle your application. I mean, we have to be fair and consistent, so, but, you know, I'm concerned about the 1:00 AM in the morning, you know, timeframe. I really don't want to see Main Street changed significantly. I mean, it's, people love to stroll up and down our Main Street, so we need some sensitivity from not you, not just you, but from all of the restaurateurs on Main Street and bars.
Yes, we do, but I just want to know where the, where the board is going. We're going to, I guess my understanding is we're going to hold it at this point, correct?
Yes.
Can we do have a public comment regarding this?
I'd just like to point out that there is a license...
Could you just introduce yourself?
Mark Fineran.
Thank you.
There is a license.
Speaking as a citizen, correct?
Yes, absolutely. There is a license down the street, as you're aware, and there are residential apartments within that building. So I think you need to consider all of that, and I've known Ilya for decades, and they're very hardworking and dedicated, and I don't think that he would go back on any condition that you applied, but, I mean, in the sake of, for the sake of equity, you just need to kind of keep that in mind. Thanks.
Your point is well taken. Thank you, Mr. Fineran. Okay, so we're going to hold it, put it on another agenda, have more information when you come back in front of the board, and we'll take another look.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to review and vote to approve minutes of meetings.
I'll have some access in the September 26 meeting.
Second, I agree with you.
Okay. On the very first page, under present, it says Chair Taylor. Chair? Should be Nancy Taylor, Chair. And I just wanted to make note, it says staff present, and it lists all the staff and their titles, and I think that's a relatively new addition, and I like that. On page three, the first large paragraph, Route 28 corridor, the second line, it says school administration building to Oxbow Road. I don't think that's quite right. I think that's, it's the school administration building to the other, the road that's kind of in front of Walmart and the...
This is actually going east.
The Route 28 east, it does go to Oxbow.
Yeah. You're going, it's really, it's the other direction.
But what I'm saying is, I thought the discussion was about where they were thinking about putting a roundabout in front of the school admin building. That's not quite to Oxbow, that's...
Oh, no, but I think that the reason they mentioned Oxbow is because that's the whole scope of that reconstruction project.
Right.
Okay.
It's in that phase.
Before you go on, on page three, in, under number two, the third paragraph, says, a signalized traffic light is proposed for the intersection of Main Street and Scranton Avenue opposite the senior center and housing project. I would like to just simply stop after senior center, because the housing project is kind of, it's not very specific. And also then at the very last, on page three, the last paragraph, says, the plan for the Sandwich Road, and I think it really should be Sandwich Road T-Ticket Highway Intersection, is to formalize the left turn lane northbound and go with a T-style intersection, eliminating the merge lane into the 28, and I want to say into Route 28 from Sandwich Road. Roundabout was considered. Instead, it says strike south and say from Sandwich Road. Otherwise, it's pretty ambiguous. I couldn't make any sense out of it.
And I had a correction on the recognition. Is this the meeting of September 26?
Yes.
The recognition, I recognize passing of Sergeant Craig Clarkson. Misprint there.
If we could slip back to two, if we're going to work through this, under the Town Manager's preliminary report, where it starts off, AMP is seeking a memorandum of understanding with the town to donate the property, and is this at Boxbury Hill Road? Is that where the property is? Right now, it's ambiguous, it doesn't tie it down at all. And then lease it from the town?
Highway Department report?
It's, no, this is under the, on page two, under the Town Manager's preliminary report.
It's the golf course property, so I believe that is Boxbury.
Yeah, I believe so. So I would just simply specify to donate the property at Boxbury Hill Road and then lease it from the town. Is that, it just adds some specificity in it, because it's pretty vague at that point.
The address is actually here, but it drives.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess it raises the question, sometimes the minutes aren't clear, but they're accurate, you know? So if I didn't give an address...
Okay.
Right.
Then we shouldn't necessarily add it if I didn't say it, you know, if it doesn't accurately reflect what was said at the meeting. And I don't, I don't remember what I said at the meeting in these cases.
Okay, well...
I just want to be careful about adding clarification that wasn't, isn't necessarily aligned with what was said at the meeting.
But I was trying to, I was trying to make sense of what project this was, but I guess tying it to AMP does tie it down to that particular hearing, so.
Okay.
All right, well, I'll back off on that, so whatever you think is appropriate is fine with me.
Go ahead. My next, until page five, do you have something on page four?
I have, yeah, I have a couple, two items on page four. Under number three, Town Manager Hiring Process, oh, in the middle of that first paragraph, you'll see procure description of service, scope of work, and request to at least three vendors and documents, document the process. And then in the next sentence, contracts that are more than $50,000 need to use an invitation for bid, and there's the acronym that's defined it, or sometimes a request for proposal. We later start using the acronym RFP, so maybe just define the RFP right there for somebody that doesn't know that northern language. And then the very next sentence, it says, can use the competitive sealed bid. I think it needs to say the town can use the competitive sealed bid. And then finally, at the third from the back line at the bottom, the RFP advantage is that they do not always end up with lowest, quote, based on extra evaluation criteria. It says, currently says, because doing extra evaluation grade, which is not, doesn't make sense to me. So I just said, strike because doing, just say based on extra evaluation criteria. Does that seem a little clearer?
That sounds like something Maura would say.
Okay. And then the third paragraph from the bottom on that page, it says, Mr. Brown thinks it is a luxury, and he would like, if he knew the town manager was retiring, and could they, and I would say, and...
They could.
Or we could plan.
Yep.
And we could plan. And so strike could they, I, that just doesn't...
I don't think I said it like that.
I don't think you said it like that exactly. All right, so that's it for that page. Sorry for these edits, but this...
I have some on page five. Go ahead. At the very top, it just says Price would like to hire consultant, should be Scott Price. And then the second vote, Mr. Patterson motioned to use IFR process, that, I don't think we actually voted that. I recall there was a motion in the second, and then Mr. Johnson stopped, jumping in and saying, actually, here's some more information. So I don't think that this vote actually happened.
My recollection.
Okay.
Okay, so strike the bold.
So just strike the bold, bold section. Yep. And then the very last sentence, the last word, it says, either party can walk away for any reason until final binding instrument. I think that should be document, or is instrument correct there?
Well, at some point, we did vote to hire a consultant, because I was the only dissenter.
That was on the next set, though. Yeah.
The next one?
So I think that last word on this, on page five, should be document instead of instrument.
Mark, if we could back up to the paragraph just above where it says Attorney Matt Terry Amen and Clara, and in the next sentence, the sandwich project involved donating the land to the town and offset acreage used by preserving acreage preferably on site, on or off-site within the town. Because I think it's comparing, using some other location to some site within the town. So I would just make it within instead of in.
On page six... Can I just back up to five?
Sure.
I'm not sure about final binding document. I think instrument is what I, yeah. Okay. Is what I said. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On five, the Pheasant Lane, the third, Mr. Patterson motioned to create a deed restricted affordability on 30, has me as an abstention. I had recused from that, so I didn't vote, so there was no abstention. It was just a 4-0 vote.
That you recused yourself, yes. That's important.
The line right above that, it says Chair Taylor asked if the court case is still under appeal. I think it's important to have the, I know Mr. Johnson stopped answered that question, and I think it's important to include the answer to that question in the minutes. It's implied, but I think it should be added in there. It's implied, but I think it should be added in there.
I don't have anything on page seven.
Oh, I do, I'm sorry. The formatting there is confusing. Where it starts, the paragraph with this lowercase a, that's actually a whole section that should be separated out. I think if you look at the minutes, excuse me, at the agenda, it's really, it should be eight, presentation of November 2022, town meeting petition articles, just this whole section underneath. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it really just ought to be formatted in a way that starts off with that subtitle, if you will.
Okay. On page eight, the very top, a better choice is to destroy them, the, is it IGO or AGO?
It's, yep.
I thought it was Attorney General.
I think we should just fit.
Okay.
You sure it's not Attorney General Office?
Is, this is, this is 30B, it is the Inspector General.
So one, since we haven't defined that acronym, let's just put it down that way.
And then, towards the bottom in bold, it says select board reports, but I think that's premature because everything underneath it is still the Town Manager supplemental report, and select board reports don't start till the next page.
Yes. To be struck.
Mm-hmm. And that's all I have.
Great. And I would like to move that we approve as edited the minutes of September 26th, 2022.
Second.
And release to public.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September 26th with the edits so noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's take a look at October 1st.
At the very top, it's missing my second last name. I know pesky multiple names.
No, it's common. Well, on, on page two, it becomes under number three, all the way down to where it says Priority Four, Health and Public Safety, updated to a six, can we say fire station model? Because it's not obvious at that point that it's under the Fire Department. So I would just simply say updated to a five, to a six, fire station model. So just before station, put in fire. And then...
Sorry, I didn't catch what?
I'm sorry, under, on page two, where it says Priority Number Four, Roman numeral number four, Health and Public Safety, updated to a six, fire station model.
What else?
Let's see, in the next to the last paragraph, where it starts Chair Taylor, would like to get more into how the department functions and why employees are leaving. In that next par, sentence, how does the select board and town support those? How, shouldn't be, how can the select board and town support those departments more effectively? It's asking that question.
Or how, or how they do or do not support.
Nancy, what do you want to resolve, and how would you like to see it worded? To your question.
I think it could be just how, how can, but again, I don't remember what I said, and she may just be going on...
But that does, that's not really important, it's the gist of what you meant that needs to be captured.
I would just put, how can the select board and town support those departments more effectively?
That's what I thought. And then in the last paragraph, we cite LIP in that paragraph, and I think we need to, since it's not a common acronym, say Local Initiative Project.
When?
Where it says LIP, L-I-P.
Program, is it?
I think it's program.
Okay, I thought it was, okay, fine, what's appropriate?
I don't have anything else until page four, so.
Um, well, I, just a couple, you know, grammatical nits, and I don't mind passing this to somebody. It, that, in the middle paragraph on page three, that's where I am, where it starts off, Mr. Johnson Staub. In the next sentence, it says competing are a number of priorities. It says has a number, I think it should be competing are a number of priorities, including an Assistant Park Superintendent position, and it goes on. And then, and continuing on, East Falmouth Library Sustainability Coordinator Position and Diversity and Inclusion Officer, becoming a full-time position is, I think is what it should be. Change made to becoming a full-time, so those are the competing costs. All right, it just didn't make sense to me, but that's what, that's a suggestion I would make, anyway.
Anything else on page four? On page three, I'm sorry, Mr. Patterson?
That's the only one.
Okay. And then on to page four, Ms. Scott Price, I think you had?
Yeah, so the, almost towards the end, the select board believes they need the positions brought forward with Mr. Johnson Staub, and they are also committed to the plan presented by the Fire Chief, but need to figure out how to do it. I feel like we voted something in there.
We voted to continue with the progress on the fire station.
That was voted earlier, but I've, I vaguely recall that, I might, and I might be wrong, but I would just like to have that double-checked. I thought we voted something about the four positions that were in, that were recommended before we moved on to, in the meeting. And I could be wrong, but that's...
I think it was just a general agreement that we were gonna keep those priorities.
It may have been a consensus, I'm not sure, but...
I think that's what it was.
I think we can check on that. Yeah, just a review, please. Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, in the second paragraph, I'm sorry, especially since it starts off my saying that, that due to the size of the property, the town has limited ability to expand the west station. He suggested looking at the run and use data, once the Hatchville Station is, is in operation.
Yeah.
Then looking at the Northwest Station when considering what to do with west. It's really was the intent, and it's not a very good sentence as it's state, as it's written there. And then, let's see, this, in the paragraph, let's see, the second time that starts off Chair Taylor, which is like in the middle of that block, said she is hearing the select board. And then I would say comment, based on their priorities, is not willing, it says they are not, but it should be, just is not willing to budge on the, and I would say the firefighter positions, or on the firefighter based, on the po, on their policy, and what the chief is looking at. Anyway, that needs to get cleaned up.
Yeah, that needs to be remarked.
Or chopped up.
I agree.
And that's it.
I would move approval with the edits as noted?
In a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the October 1st open session meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we will move on, we have executive session meetings, and we have a bunch of them.
Well, I think the first one. Shall we take one at a time, so Tuesday, March 22nd? Anybody have an edit to that?
No.
I would move approval of the me, executive session minutes of March 22nd, 2022, and not release to the public.
We have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They will not be released to the public. Page 29?
Yeah, I have, I think we can make this edit without divulging the nature of this meeting. In the second paragraph, it says Attorney Troy reviewed the charter and indicated, instead of discussed, and indicated that the contract with a non-union employee, and then...
We don't want to go too far.
I'm not going any further than that, but I...
We'll leave indicated?
Yeah, because it's not, we, he, he didn't discuss it, we discussed it. And so it's what he is telling us relative to the contract.
Okay, we can take, does everyone approve indicated?
Yeah.
Indicated that the contract.
Okay, we don't want to go too much further, please.
But I think that's, and with that edit, I would move approval and not release the minutes of executive session on Tuesday, March 29th, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the executive session meeting minutes of March 29th, 2022, without releasing them to the public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, can I offer a process suggestion?
Yes.
If there are edits for executive session minutes, perhaps just submit them in writing, and we'll hold the minutes for our future meeting?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And we'll bring them back. Okay, let's take a look at May 17th, 2022, executive session.
I move that we approve and not release those executive session meetings for May 17th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the May 17th, 2022 executive session meeting notes, and not release to the public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the same with May 23rd. I would move approval and not release the executive session minutes of May 23rd, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the May 23rd, 2022 executive session meeting minutes?
The spelling.
I spelled my own name wrong.
Right. Well, that's why I wasn't gonna bring it up. You did it to yourself, then.
There we go.
It's under the first.
Yes, we'll add that second T.
Wasn't that a sensitive I?
I know, right?
I just wanted to see if anybody else is paying attention, that's all.
So, let's go back and approve the executive session minute meetings of May 17th, 2022 with one edit.
May 23rd.
I'm sorry?
It's the May 23rd.
Sorry, May 23rd, with one edit.
And not release.
And not release to the public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the June 9th, honestly, I think we can change this easily, but there's a whole series of statements in here where it says Attorney Troy...
Can we, can you just make them in writing and pass them along?
I can, but all I'm saying is initiated, but I think it really is, he led a discussion.
Okay, then we can...
So all three of those sentences all start off the same way, and I think if you just change that, it really says more about what we did, or what would happen in terms of deliberation. And with that change, I would move approval, if everybody else is willing to go with that.
Second.
And that's not release to the public.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Thursday, June 9th, our executive session meeting minutes with one edit, and not release to the public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's, on the June 21st, 2022, executive session, there is one edit that I would suggest, and if we want to just hold that back. It's, it's pretty straightforward, and...
Okay, so let's, can I, let's hold it, and if you could pass the edit down? We will hold...
I'll let Angie look at it, and she can decide whether she wants to...
We're gonna hold June 2021, uh, June 21, 2022.
Just, it needs to be our action.
We'll hold it.
Yeah.
We'll make the change, and we'll bring it back.
And then the last one is the minutes of the October 3rd, 2022, and I would like to move approval and not release those minutes for, for our action.
For public access, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the October 3rd, 2022 meeting minutes of our executive session and not release to the public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the Town Manager supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board is well aware, we have our annual November town meeting coming up on November 14th. The town meeting booklet and the annual report have both been completed and submitted to the printer. We have a series of precinct meetings coming up, and I've listed the dates for you in, in the printed report. Should the board wish to cover them, I will certainly be at, at least one precinct meeting every night. Next, I want to provide an update on Mayflower Wind. Last week, staff and special counsel met with Mayflower Wind representatives to review alternative landfall sites within Falmouth, which we had asked them to consider. Of the four options identified, they found one viable option, which they indicated they would include in an updated filing with the Energy Facility Siting Board. They indicated the revised plans for the proposed Falmouth installation would be submitted soon. As the board will recall, they suspended the, and I'm not sure if that's the technically correct term, but Mayflower Wind had filed with the Energy and Environmental Agency as well as the Energy Facilities Siting Board, but then they suspended that filing, saying that two things. One, they wanted to evaluate alternatives, alternative landfall sites within Falmouth that the town had requested, but also they needed to update it based on input from the ISO, that the transmission needed to be HVDC instead of HVAC. So, Mayflower has indicated they will be re-filing with the Energy Facility Siting Board and getting that process started again. The board may want to consider holding another public forum after, after the revised plans have been filed and reviewed by staff and our consulting engineer. In the interim, I said, I did suggest to Mayflower Wind representatives that they consider submitting written responses to the questions raised at the June 8th forum. Next, I want to mention that we learned very late last week, Friday afternoon, that Eversource is planning to begin their pole relocations along Palmer Ave this week. I don't know if that started today or not, but that should be starting soon. If it has not started, the board will recall that is in connection with the Eversource filing to install a cable to supply the Martha's Vineyard, totally unrelated to any offshore wind. That's just a cable to provide power to Martha's Vineyard from the mainland.
But it's also to get those poles out of the sidewalk, right?
Exactly right, so they're gonna be relocating those poles as one of the accommodations that the select board requested in connection with that, with the easement that was required for that project. I do have a number of staffing updates. Four firefighters have been hired with the start date of November 19th. One firefighter resigned to move out of state, and another resigned to work for a fire department off Cape. Two student police officers started the police academy training on October 16th. If they successfully complete the academy training and the subsequent field training in-house with the police department, they could be available to work summer shifts, they could, available to work next summer. The building department has hired an administrative clerk. The library has hired a full-time library assistant for the children's department. The water department filled two vacant operator positions via internal promotion, and one grade 10 water operator resigned to accept a position in another community. And your next meetings, you have a regular meeting November 7th. November 14th, we will post a brief half-hour meeting before town meeting on the 14th. And then the next regular meetings of the board are November 21st, December 5th, and December 19th. And Diane will be preparing a proposed schedule for calendar year 2023.
Great. Thank you.
Raised the issue, since you have the list of the precinct meetings, I know in the past, we've sort of tried to make sure somebody was covering each of them from the select board, and we kind of passed that under the consent agenda, but didn't talk about who might be available. And the only reason I bring it up is that I'm gonna be really constrained. The only one I'm gonna be able to get to is the precinct one and two on Wed, Wednesday, because I'm too in grandparent duty. The rest of that week, we'll be back in time for a select board. So I didn't know whether you wanted to try to organize that now?
To the board, I can, I can, I was looking at precinct one, two, and precinct three.
I was thinking of five and six, because it's my neighborhood.
And I was thinking eight and nine, because that's my precinct.
Sounds like we're pretty well distributed. All right, so I...
So four and seven?
Four and seven.
I guess I could do that as well.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
I hit the ones at the navigator, too.
Great.
That's good, I thought we could probably take care of that.
Good point. Mr. Patterson, thank you. Okay, let's move on to the individual select board member reports. Any reports? Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, just, you know, I attended meetings of the EDIC as a board member, and you're appointed a board member, and also the Cape and Islands municipal leaders of... Association meeting, but I think Doug, you were actually there. I, I only zoomed in.
Yeah, that was a very interesting, good meeting and Peter attended remotely as well.
Yeah.
And, uh, it was a good discussion and we're hoping in November to take, that, that was input from Town Managers and we had a lot of good solicitation from, you know, input from, uh, some of the Town Managers and, uh, one Town Manager, I think she's from Sandwich, mentioned the importance of leadership with the Select Board, just saying thank you sometimes to staff and appreciation and recognition of staff achievements and, um, goals and milestones.
You mean Heather?
No, uh, I'm not sure what town, I think her name was Liz, but I didn't really catch her name for sure.
Yeah, I didn't think she was from Sandwich though, but I think she's one of the other, outer Cape towns.
Okay, well, I'm not sure what town, I'm sorry, but it was just an interesting comment that struck me that.
China's well taken, yes.
Could I, I'm going to just add on that same meeting, one of the things that came up though is that the challenges that the towns are having in sup, in, in replacing staff, including Town Managers, um, so that, uh, it's, it's become a real challenge and of course housing is a, a big part of that challenge because even people with decent salaries have a difficult time finding housing. Uh, and in the lower ends, obviously the, the staff throughout the entire town are, are just challenged with getting housing these days. So the whole hiring process is nowhere near as straightforward. You don't get the number of applicants you'd like to be able to, kind of select the better of the best, you know? So, and that came up in that meeting.
And so the, the November meeting may be focused on affordable housing and potentially the short-term rental, uh, issue. Uh, some of the other towns are taking it up as well, so I don't know how far along we'll be with our research and it's not clear that we'll be really ready to discuss it in November. There are some alternate discussions that we might have if that one's not really ready for primetime. And that's going to be, I think, at the, uh, what do they call it, the family table? I think it's in Yarmouth. So that one will be a little bit of a travel, but the, the one in December is tentatively scheduled to be at Seacrest again.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that would be legislative update as well.
Yeah, yeah, just to make it easier for the legislators to get to that venue.
Right.
Hmm.
Um, that's it for really, uh, big, big reports.
Mr. Scott Price, did you have something?
Yeah, so I mentioned earlier, I spent the day with the Falmouth Police Department, which was really, uh, really fun. I recommend everybody do it. You get to wear a bulletproof vest for a day, which is kind of cool. Uh, but really, it was great to see how the department works and to talk to people and really get a feel for the type of work that they actually do, you know, not just what we think that they do. Um, so I really enjoyed that. I also went and spent the day at DPW, so I spent the day in the building and met all the department heads and talked a little bit about all the work that they do. That is a fantastically run department. Um, Peter McConney is really impressive. I'll be recognizing the team, um, next meeting. I also attended the Affordable Housing Committee meeting and it was great to see Kim Fish there representing, uh, the town really well and she had a lot of really good updates, some good information. And she reminded me of something that I've been meaning to tell the board about is that we signed up, we collectively, Kim and I, signed up for a Habitat for Humanity, uh, build in December. It's still tentative because they've had so many volunteers that they've had to kind of space out all of their projects, um, but we had hoped that once we confirmed that we have that date, that members of the board and other, uh, town employees might want to participate on that day. So I'll give more updates on that once we know for sure that we haven't been booted from that time slot. Are you, that's all?
I, I officially will be out of town starting tomorrow. Um, my training schedule got pushed back, that's why I wasn't able to attend, but as of four-thirty, five o'clock tomorrow morning, I'm headed south, uh, and I'll be back in the state on, um, Saturday of next week.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Any discussion of future agenda items?
I think we touched on that one earlier, it inter, establish, potentially establishing entertainment license policy or adjusting said policy.
Yeah, I'd like to revisit policies because I've thrown a couple ideas out for policies like the, uh, Embarkation Fee Fund and I think there was a couple others, I'd have to check my notes of, if there were, but there are a couple policies that we never did get to.
I know, but I'd like, it's just an update on the, um, the, the status of the lift station on Robbins Road to support that Dr. Cod development there. I mean, I, we'd like to try to get it done as quickly as possible, understand just what's going to be involved and how much of an upgrade is required, what the process is going to be, but it'd be nice to have a, you know, progress report if we don't have an actual plan, um, just because that's costing so much money when we hold up these development pro, programs. We know what the cost of inflation is, but materials have been much even, even higher in terms of adding cost because of delays. But it would just be nice to be kept up to date on a regular basis.
And I would like to, um, suggest that we do another Saturday workshop and invite the Chair and Vice Chair of the FinCom to really take a deep dive into, um, what funding streams, how they work, when someone says override, what does that actually mean? And in order to do that, um, I would ask Mr. Johnson Staub to sort of take a look and assess, you know, kind of do an assessment of where we're at and how we could move forward and, and get everything that we think that we want in terms of positions and the Fire Station. Um, I think we just need a, a deeper dive into that and a better understanding. I, I, let me take that back, I think I should speak for myself. I certainly need more information about how that works. Um, and I did meet with the, the Chair of the FinCom and he was more than willing to do a Saturday workshop with us. It would be a workshop, we wouldn't take public comment, but take a really deep dive into the, the financial piece. So if you're willing to do that.
That would include the firefighter staffing discussion as well, right?
Yes.
Staffing in general.
Yeah, or basically how do we, if this is what we want, what are the, the, sort of the funding sources and how do they actually work?
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I would be asking for.
So I just want to clarify, um, expectations in terms of my preparation for that. So I'm, I'm clearly hearing on the revenue side and the process, so happy to outline that. Are you also looking for, um, you know, a list of potential staffing that the board might want to consider as part of an override or is it just, just the context of what's the revenue, how does, and what's the override process and?
Yeah, no, I want to go, I would want to go a little bit deeper into that, yes.
I agree.
Yeah, we would like to identify where the shortcomings are now and what we might really, what would make us optimum performance as a town?
A kind of a deep assessment into, to the money, because I think we get sort of the, the top level stuff, which I think is great, but I'd like to have a little more information, um, before that I could make a decision on how we could move forward to get everything we think we need.
Right.
We'll prioritize it.
Yeah, asking for a kind of a quality assessment for where we should probably be investing in more staffing, if that's what is recommended.
Yes, and, and, and just understanding the money situation and our financial health a little bit better. Um, so I can work with Mr. Johnson Staub on setting that up as long as the board is in agreement. Anything else under future agenda items? If not.
People waiting in the audience for something.
Oh.
Do you mind, uh, we talked around the agenda tonight for assigned variance in Cape Cod Church. I talked to Mrs. Davidson today and she said we were beyond the agenda tonight.
See it?
Did I miss the assigned variance?
I did not see one.
I didn't see it.
I.
When were you, were you told that today?
Yes. So we had written a letter, um, uh, maybe three weeks ago, we missed the Tuesday meeting for the holiday and I checked back in today and she said we were beyond the meeting that we, she said typically towards the end, I come for the whole meeting because sometimes if you have something, you move off and you move that out. So it's Cape Cod Church at one, two, or five, Maplewood Highway.
I don't see anything on our agenda about assigned variance and I don't think I read anything from our consent agenda about assigned variance.
I'm just going to look at my email really quick to see if I see it.
I'm sorry.
We really have wasted your time.
Diana Jameson is not usually wrong. But, but we have a legal requirement that it has to be posted in order for us to deliberate on the matter.
Is that a time-sensitive issue as well?
I'm meeting, I'm, I'm. I'll be double seven.
We, we can't discuss it anyway, it's not, it's not on the agenda. So I, I apologize, we do not have it.
It could have been something on miscommunication, I heard incorrectly, but.
Okay, I'll ask, uh, Mr. Johnson Staub to take a closer look. Thank you, and I apologize.
And it was Cape Cod Church, right?
Cape Cod Church, yes. Okay, um, if we have nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.